Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Administrative Public Hearing for the City of Scranton. Since this is an administrative hearing where we can only accept testimony, we cannot respond to any questions concerning challenges at this hearing. I would like to commence this Act 47 public hearing to receive testimony on the rescission of distressed status of the City of Scranton under Act 47 as amended, the Municipalities Financial Recovery Program. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no religion, just as strong.
Thank you. I would like to call the Administrative Public Hearing to order at this time. My name is Fred Chapman. I am a local government policy specialist for the Department of Community and Economic Development, and I am happy to serve as your hearing officer on this afternoon. This public hearing is being held in accordance with Act 47 as amended. The hearing today will be to present testimony relating to the recommendation for the rescission of the financial distress designation under provisions of Act 47 Municipalities Financial Recovery Act. Individuals representing the City of Scranton, City of Scranton's Act 47 Coordinator, member of the Governor's Center for Local Government Services, and any interested party is invited to provide testimony after we provide our full testimony as the purpose of this rescission. Today's hearing is to be held to receive testimony related to whether the distress designation of the City of Scranton under Act 47, the Municipalities Financial Recovery Act, should be rescinded. There is a sign-in sheet circulating to verify attendance of today's hearing. I will ask that all in attendance, please sign the sheet. Even if you're not providing testimony, we ask that you please sign the sheet. Notice of today's public hearing has been published in accordance with the Sunshine Law, and written notice have been provided to members of council, mayor, and the City of Scranton Solicitor prior to this meeting. Now, we would like the testimony to be presented at this time. I would ask the stenographer to please swear in those who wish to present testimony. If you change your mind at some point during this session, anyone in the audience, and you would like to provide testimony, that will be fine, but you will have to be sworn in before proceeding. Those who are sure they are providing testimony, if you could please stand at this time, and we will ask the stenographer to swear you in.
May I raise your hand, please? You swear to affirm your privacy and privacy, tell the truth, the whole truth, and the untruth, and the right to the truth. If they do, we will do it.
Thank you. When you present your testimony, we ask that you step to the podium and please announce your name loud and clear so the stenographer can record. Okay, the first testimony we will have will be Mayor Page Cognetti. Yes, please.
All right, this is on. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thanks for making the trip here. I hope it stayed sunny, and it's nice to see you in person instead of virtually like last time. My name is Paige Gebhardt Cognetti. I am the mayor of the City of Scranton. I appreciate very much the support and guidance from the Commonwealth, from the Department of Community Economic Development through the years, and especially our recovery coordinator, the Pennsylvania Economy League, Jim and Jerry. We are deeply grateful for everything you've done for the city for all of these years. We last convened in 2020 with the specter of economic catastrophe from the impact of the global pandemic. And while I just, you know, this week was reading through my testimony and our testimony, we met at a very, very scary time. And we're lucky that the worst case did not bear out and that our revenues came in higher than we anticipated in those months. But I appreciate last year the flexibility of DCED for listening to us and not having the, not, not having us exit during that uncertainty. It's been very, very helpful for us to see those revenues come in, get our feet under us, get through while we're still wearing these masks, get to a point where our economy is, is, is up and running. So since we did last convene, I wanted to mention a few highlights. Our revenues did come in higher than anticipated in those, in those early months especially and throughout 2020. So that was a huge help. The Act 511 litigation that was before us, again, at the same time, 18 months ago when we last convened, concluded in our favor. So that $50 million judgment is, is not on our shoulders, and that was still pending at that time. Our tax policy working group has continued to meet and try to take a whole picture of what is possible. That includes, of course, looking at a payable preparation tax, which is, you know, in the exit plan. But I wanted to go year by year highlight. In 2021, with the help of city council and the prior administration, we put the refuse fee onto the real estate tax bill. It hasn't approved collections. I think that's a great example of cooperation altogether and between administrations and between councils. This year, we are hopeful. There's a lot going on with the school district right now, but we are hopeful that we will pass a payable preparation tax, not just in the city, but with the school district, and be able to make that conversion next year, which we think will improve our long-term revenue prospects in terms of a business tax. We're hoping that in 2022, we could petition for a hotel tax, trying to be creative with revenue streams and see if there are ways that we can pull in. And we know it's not a massive amount of money, but we know that every bit helps. And we saw last year, you know, diversifying our, our portfolio of revenues, if you will, is going to be very important as we go into the future. We'll continue to push for a real estate property tax reassessment. A lot of us have been advocating that for that a long time. We've seen some movement, and we're hopeful there. And what we're hoping is that if we can continue to manage things well and continue to get, bring those revenues in, grow the tax base, that over time, we might be able to reduce our wage tax little by little. We know that the wage tax is an impediment to our growth. We really hope that we can work together over the coming years to decrease that, you know, maybe just a tenth of a percentage point every year, if possible. And it's a big ask, but that's certainly a goal of ours as we look to, again, improve our economic growth prospects and take advantage of momentum we do have. Another highlight is that the S&amp;P improved our rating from negative to stable, which I think everyone in this room knows that that's a big deal. It doesn't sound like much on its face, but that is a very good thing. And our general obligation debt has a double B-plus long-term rating. So while still just below investment grade, it's certainly an improvement. So some highlights about the current condition of the city. Our current operational deficits have been eliminated, and our financial condition has improved. Part of this optimism lies in the payroll tax conversion, and I think us taking a really good look at the tax makeup, and that's working across our partners throughout the county, city, school district, our single tax office, and also working with the business community to, to manage through to these things. We also have looked at how we collect our taxes. We have a new refuse, delinquent refuse collector. We're really looking at the collections as a piece, too, that hasn't been efficient in the past. And while it's not an overnight solution by any means, as you know, all of these contracts and agreements can take a while to change, we're taking a, a good look at that to be able to improve in the future. We've also, we've also tried in this, you know, by spurred by the pandemic, we've tried to cut, to really cut out unnecessary spending and be more diligent in our monitoring. As you all know, this is a city, not a business. We can't just decide not to sell a certain type of widget one year. That does prohibit us from, like, making drastic cuts that we could, but we've tried to be as lean as possible in the operational side. And the same goes for how we're trying to manage the personnel side as well. On our debt, let's see, excuse me. So obligations issued to finance the city's debt have been retired, reduced, or reissued in a manner that has adequately refinanced outstanding principal and interest and has permitted timely debt service and reasonable probability of continued timely debt service. We've run, refunded all of the city's variable or high-interest rate debt over the last few years, most recently the AMAAS refunding, which was the last piece of high variable, variable debt on the city's books. Just called the Webster note, which brought our profile down to 77-plus million from over 100 million. The continual reduction of the tax, tax anticipation note. It was previously about 12.75 million. Last year, we brought it down to 12.2, our current budget. We have a $10 million tan proposed. We think that's, we think that's progress, and we're looking forward to continuing to whittle that down if possible. Mentioned our credit rating, and then on the workers' compensation front, labor and industry recognized our progress in managing claims and promoting safety and released $6 million from the reserve account. We are working on the, the RFP for banking for an OPEB account so that we can begin to that dedicated OPEB account. And I would mention that our, the way that we have been viewing requests for proposals, banking for the ARP money, for example, we're, we're doing proposals for all these banking services. We're, we're trying to be as transparent with contracting as we possibly can be. We are the, very much have the highest bar in our region, whether city or county, for what, you know, some people look at us sometimes, like, how, how, why did you have to do an RFP for that? We always, we always do that, and that's the, the right thing to do. Scranton has negotiated or resolved all claims or judgments that would have placed the municipality in imminent jeopardy of financial distress. The city has resolved several lawsuits. I mentioned the Act 511 litigation. There's also, there was a suit challenging the city's receipt of proceeds from the sewer sale that was favorably resolved. And the city has resolved a number of federal suits as well. So we've taken an aggressive tack on that in these two years to try to make sure that we don't have these hanging over our heads and, of course, do what we can to make sure we're not setting ourselves up for future suits. The reasonably projected revenues of the city are sufficient to fund ongoing necessary expenditures. Let's see, excuse me. We will continue with diligent oversight of expenditures. Regarding pension funding levels have significantly improved, making the MMO more affordable, and we have consistently paid the MMO by the due date. We actually just signed today, I think, an adoption of the recently published mortality table for public sector employees as suggested by the Society of Actuaries. There's a long, long way to go, as you all know, on, on these pension pieces. And what we've, what the actuary said is we could, you know, also reduce the, the, the projected, the, from 7.25 to 7% in terms of return. It was too far for us to go to both adopt the new mortality table and then reduce that return projection from seven and a quarter to seven. But we'll, we'll do our best to reduce it to seven next year. So we're taking kind of a two-year approach on that, but just signed, signed our adoption of that new table next year. Hopefully, we'll be able to reduce that, that down to seven. And lastly, we manage the 2020 budget to a surplus and projects the same for 2021. Our 2022 proposed budget does not include a tax increase. As you may know, here in Scranton, we have a, a school district that is in recovery status from PDE, and they're, they have kind of a mandate in place to tax, raise real estate taxes quite significantly each year. So we are trying, and again, appreciate Jerry and Jim for, for understanding the interplay between the two so well over time that we know that these are the same residents, and if, if they're going to be increasing real estate taxes by a significant amount, we, we want to be able to, to manage in these budget years to not necessarily do that ourselves. So the budget, it does include an increase in administrative and collectively bargain positions in order to better, better serve residents. The costs of salary benefits, both for current employees and any new positions, are real, and they have to be managed over time. In order to serve residents, we do need some more bandwidth, but we also need to make sure we're paying for that. So I think you've seen we've been pursuing increased employee contributions into healthcare, and we will continue to look out phasing out, look at phasing out defined benefit plans in favor, in favor of more sustainable defined contribution plans. I know that is not easily done, but I think over time, there's just, there's, there's some really hard things that we'll have to do, and we're not afraid of, of doing that hard work. And as we seek to exit in January, we're still working on a list of items to carry into 2022 and beyond. Those include financial policies for investment debt and fund balance. They're currently being reviewed by some, by some folks that we've tapped for free consulting services to help us make sure those are what we need. Opening the OPEB trust, like I said. Seeking a HEP test either next year or the following year. That's a pretty intensive thing, but it's really important that we, we do that, similar to a reassessment. We don't want to have entities that no longer qualify for tax exemptions getting those tax exemptions. So that is something that we very much want to do. We'll continue to ask for pilot contributions. Last year, we got, I think, $63,000 more than, than the previous year, which, again, these are small dollars, but the, the impact of sending those letters out and following up with those phone calls and having those conversations, I think that's something that can grow. We're going to be re-establishing an active redevelopment authority where there's actual funds, and hopefully, they'll be able to fund themselves over time so we can take advantage of economic growth and development. We're also looking to establish a director of finance position to replace all the work that Pell has conducted for the city for three decades. So while we're here today to advocate for the City of Scranton to be released from distressed status, and I believe the, the items that I just put forth show our readiness. I don't want to give the impression that we believe the future months, years, and decades are going to be easy. Like so many cities and other government entities, the City of Scranton has long-term debt obligations it'll struggle to meet. We go into our days in our planning with eyes wide open to this. The way out is to manage austerity where possible and grow the city's revenue and tax bases. Growing the city is not possible without investing now at reasonable levels to spur our economic growth. Our partnerships across the city region and nationally will help us as we navigate these waters in the coming years. We'll do our best to be successful and appreciate the past technical support, and we hope future general support and guidance of the Commonwealth, DCED, and Pell. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for providing your testimony. We shall now hear testimony from Act 47 Coordinator, Mr. Gerald Cross, Pennsylvania Economy League.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. My name is Gerald Cross. I'm of the Pennsylvania Economy League, Central Pennsylvania Division. Our principal office is located in Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania. PEL is the DCED-appointed Act 47 Coordinator for the City of Scranton. I thank you for the opportunity to present our testimony today regarding our written Act 47 Coordinator's recommendation to the Secretary of the Department of Community and Economic Development for the City of Scranton, which was dated October 20th, 2021. I request today that this recommendation to the secretary be included by reference to this testimony and made part of the official hearing record. As you are aware, Act 199 of 2014 amended Act 47 to provide a timeline and a process for municipalities to exit from the Act 47 program. For this city, the revised and updated Act 47 recovery plan was adopted by city council on August 23rd, 2012. That started the Act 199 five-year timeline for the city to exit from the Act 47 program. As part of the Act 199 exit process, PEL as the coordinator was required to prepare and file a report stating the financial condition of the city. On February 17th, 2017, we filed with the city a report stating the financial condition of the City of Scranton. Our findings in that report noted that although the city has made noteworthy progress on a number of fronts, a three-year exit plan was recommended for the city. PEL subsequently, in conjunction with city officials, prepared that three-year exit plan for the city. On July 27th, 2012, the city adopted the Act 47 exit plan for the city. The three-year time limit for the city's adopted 2017 exit plan would have expired in July 2020. The coordinator provided testimony in support of such a rescission in March of 2020. However, on May 29th, 2020, the governor of Pennsylvania signed into law an amendment to the fiscal code. Section 1604D.1 of that code provides for the following. "A municipality operating pursuant to a recovery plan under the Act of July 10, 1987, known as the Municipalities Financial Recovery Act, shall be eligible for an 18-month extension beyond the time limit imposed under Section 254 of the Municipalities Financial Recovery Act." The coordinator, in consultation with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, did prepare an amended Act 47 exit plan providing for this 18-month extension, which was adopted by the city in July 2020. The 18-month extension expires in January 2022. On October 20th, 2021, PEL as the coordinator submitted to DCED the recommendation to the secretary, which included an evaluation of the Act 199 enumerated four factors for the Secretary of DCED to consider when making a determination on whether to rescind the distressed status of a municipality. The four factors are as follows. Number one, operational deficits of the municipality have been eliminated, and the financial condition of the municipality, as evidenced by audited financial statements prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and projections of future revenues and expenditures, demonstrates a reasonable probability of financial, future financial balance budgets absent participation in the act. Factor two is obligations issued to finance the municipality's debt have been retired, reduced, or reissued in a manner that has adequately refinanced outstanding principal and interest and has permitted timely debt service and reasonable probability of continued timely debt service absent participation in the act. Factor three is the municipality has negotiated and resolved all claims or judgments that would have placed the municipality in imminent jeopardy of financial default. Factor four is the reasonably projected revenues of the municipality are sufficient to fund ongoing necessary expenditures, including pension and debt obligations, and the continuation or negotiation of collective bargaining agreements and the provision of municipal services. Projections of revenue shall include any anticipated tax or fee increases to fund the ongoing expenditures for the first five years after termination of distressed status. Our recommendation to the secretary outlined the city's progress and circumstances under each of those statutory factors. For factor one, we found that the city has experienced a mix of operating budget surpluses and deficits over the past four years. For example, in 2018, the city had an audited 1.2 million or 1% operating deficit, but in 2020, the unaudited financial statement shows a surplus of 3.8 million or approximately 4%. Based on our review of the city's 2021 budget and operating positions through the first three quarters of this year, we estimate the city will have a slight 2021 surplus of approximately $800,000. Under factor two, we determined that the city efficiently utilized a significant portion of the $66.9 million from this, realized from the 2016 sewer sale proceeds over the term of the 2017 exit plan to defees over $42 million in high-yield, long-term general obligation notes and bonds. The city's total outstanding debt has decreased from $113 million in 2017 to under $80 million in 2021. More notably, since 2016, the city's overall debt has decreased by $78 million or 49%, which is a significant reduction. During the period 2016 to 2021, the city has made timely all of its debt service payments. It should also be noted that the city will retire its 2012 Act 47 loan of $1 million from the Commonwealth in the year 2022. For factor three, we found that during the amended exit plan period, the city has settled or fully adjudicated several outstanding lawsuits. However, we also noted that there remain several outstanding lawsuits that the city is defending against. One lawsuit in particular would retroactively reinstate the cost of living increases for retirees of the police department. This lawsuit involves a significant sum of money and does pose some potential future liability for the city. As coordinator, we concluded that the extent of any liability from this litigation is not possible to know until the litigation has been completed, which will most likely occur after the January 27th, 2022 statutory deadline for terminating the city's distressed status. Under factor four, the coordinator projects that the city will incur operating deficits throughout the 2022 to 2026 projection period on a baseline examination basis. The lack of inherent growth in the city's real property tax revenues and only slight growth in the city's earned income tax revenue, when coupled with the annual projected expenditure growth of over 2% per year, will cause the city to realize operating budget deficits throughout the projection period. However, offsetting these projected deficits, we believe, are the city's cash fund balance, as well as the 2021 American Rescue Plan intergovernmental transfer, which will replace lost revenue resulting from the 2021 COVID pandemic restrictions. Therefore, for the city to mitigate the effects of its annual, the projected annual flat or decreasing real property assessed valuations, the city will have to make incremental property tax rate increases and/or reduce expenditures over the next five years to avoid the projected operating budget deficits. For the years 2022 to 2023, we believe the city will have sufficient ARP money available to cover the projected deficits. For 2023, the city can account for the small projected deficit of $129,000 through expenditure reductions or the use of its fund balance. However, as required by Act 199, the coordinator must recommend that the city increase its property tax millage by varying percentages through the projection period. That is, 5.1%, 14.8%, and 0.7%, or a variety or mixture of those rates in the years 2024, 2026, to increase municipal revenue, which will eliminate the projected operating deficits in those years. The total property tax percentage increase over the five-year period of 2022 to 2026 is 20.6% as recommended by the coordinator under Act 199. Any expenditure reductions implemented by the city during this period will reduce the recommended percentage property tax millage rates. Additionally, outside of the four factors, we examined the Act 199 requirement to determine whether the condition of a fiscal emergency is present in the city. A fiscal emergency exists if a distressed municipality is insolvent or is projected to be insolvent within 180 days or less or is unable to ensure the continued provision of vital and necessary services, police, fire, refuse collection, or to meet payroll and debt service obligations. or to meet payroll and debt service obligations. We have noted in our report that the city's adopted two thousand and twenty-one operating budget appropriated sufficient funds to provide many of the vital and necessary services, such as police and fire services, refuse collection and disposal, snow removal, payroll and pension obligations, and the required fulfillment of debt and other financial obligations. Our analysis also determined that the city was projected to be able to meet all of its financial obligations, including debt service and payroll. At the time of the writing of that recommendation to the secretary in October, there was no evidence from the city or otherwise that the city was insolvent or would be insolvent within a hundred and eighty days, or that the city would be unable to ensure the continued provision of vital and necessary services. Accordingly, it is the recommendation of the coordinator that based upon a review of the totality of the factors, substantial evidence supports a decision by the secretary of D C E D to issue a determination rescinding the order declaring the city of Scranton a distressed municipality. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Jerry Cross, thank you for your testimony. We will now hear testimony from Council Chairman Bill Gahn.
My name is Bill Gahin, and I am the president of Scranton City Council. Thank you for providing me with the opportunity to submit a statement regarding the recommendation of the city's Acts forty-seven coordinator to rescind the city's distressed determination pursuant to the Municipality's Financial Recovery Act, Act forty-seven of nineteen eighty-seven as amended. This is my eighth and final year serving on Scranton City Council. On January tenth, nineteen ninety-two, when the city was declared financially distressed by a departmental order of the secretary of the then Department of Community Affairs, I was four years old. For the majority of my life as a proud Scrantonian, the city has been deemed distressed. After many trials and tribulations over the last twenty-nine years, I believe it is appropriate at this time for you to finally rescind the city's distressed status for several reasons. First, the city has made tremendous progress over the last eight years in terms of our finances. In my first year as a city councilman back in two thousand and fourteen, the city's credit rating was terrible, was almost nonexistent, financial institutions would barely give us the time of day, and city officials were constantly holding their breath at the end of the year to make sure we were able to meet our payroll. Today, the city is estimated to incur a surplus of nearly a million dollars at the end of this year. For the first time in recent memory, the city has a fund balance. This improvement in the overall financial condition of the city has come as a result of the hard work of the current and previous administrations and city council. I also would be remiss if I did not acknowledge former president of City Council Bob McGough, who I served with, who passed away from a courageous battle with cancer, and he really started the ball rolling back in two thousand and fourteen with some of the decisions that he made, and also the former business administrator Dave Bolzoni, who I worked closely with as well. Many difficult and sometimes painful decisions had to be made in order to correct the fiscal mismanagement of the past. Since City Council adopted a three-year exit plan in two thousand and seventeen, all debt service payments have been made on time. The city's total outstanding debt decreased from about a hundred and thirteen million to, a hundred and thirteen-and-a-half million dollars to roughly eighty-and-a-half million dollars today. Since two thousand and sixteen, the city's overall debt has decreased by nearly eighty million dollars or about fifty percent. This is tremendous progress for a city that only a few years ago was on the verge of bankruptcy. Secondly, the city has seen significant progress with regard to the solvency of its pension funds. In two thousand and thirteen, the market value of the city's aggregate pension fund was forty-three-point-seven million dollars. In August of two thousand and fourteen, I listened to then Auditor General Eugene D. Pasquale forecast that within three to five years, our pension funds could run out of money, forcing us into bankruptcy. The city's financial stability looked bleak. Since that time, several difficult steps have been taken, and today, the aggregate pension fund reached a market value of over one hundred and ten million dollars. The pension funds today are no longer on the verge of collapse, although they're still distressed, the future looks very promising. Third, our Act forty-seven recovery coordinator, the Pennsylvania Economy League, noted in their recommendation to you that one major issue in the city of Scranton is the lack of inherent growth in the city's real property tax revenue. According to their recommendation, in twenty years, the city's real property assessed value increased by only two-point-seven percent, while the city's real property market value has increased by eighty-one-point-one percent. This is due in large part to the fact that reassessment has not been conducted in Lackawanna County since nineteen sixty-eight. Thankfully, all indications are that a countywide reassessment will be conducted within the next few years, which will help reverse this troubling trend and improve the growth in the city's revenues from property taxes. Finally, after eight years on this council, I have never been more confident in the city of Scranton. Yes, we have challenges, just like every other municipality in Pennsylvania, but where there are challenges, there are also opportunities. We have proven that we can work together and make the difficult decisions necessary to keep our city financially stable and prosperous. Scranton's future looks extremely bright. Just yesterday, President Biden signed a one-trillion-dollar infrastructure bill that will have an enormous impact on our city. As part of that historic legislation, sixty-six billion dollars has been earmarked for the revitalization of passenger and freight rail, including a route between Scranton and New York City, which would potentially generate eighty-seven million dollars in annual economic activity. This city led the country in the development of the iron rail and coal industries in the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. Today, we are on the brink of charting a new course for the city of Scranton, where once again, we can be an important contributor to the success, not just of the Northeast, not just of the state of Pennsylvania, but of the United States of America. Today, I ask you to rescind this distressed status so that we can continue to capitalize on the progress made over the last eight years and make our city a place that our hard-working residents can be proud to live, work, and raise their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Chairman, for providing your testimony. At this time, we will hear from the Department of Community and Economic Development Local Government Policy Specialist, Mr. James Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. I'm Jim Rose of the, I am the Local Government Policy Specialist for the northeastern region of D C E D. I've been working for the city since I started working for D C E D in two thousand and thirteen. At that time, finances were in terrible condition. We would have meetings, we would have regularly scheduled weekly meetings with the Economy League and the leaders of the city, and we would start to discuss how much money we had and would we be able to make payroll. This would start in the middle of the year as opposed to the end of the year. At that point in time, the vendors were being unpaid for several months because the city just didn't have the money to pay them other than to pay their payrolls. There was a great deal of animosity between City Council and the mayor and certainly the unions. That kind of led to many, many problems because they weren't able to work on any of the, the issues that were identified by the Economy League in the recovery plan, and the city was not able to progress. I have to say, times have changed. During the course of the current administration and council and the previous two, all parties have worked together to move the city in the right direction and tackle the goals of the recovery plan. Visible animosity has not been seen for a long time. The results of these greatly improved relationships has enabled the city to develop reasonable and workable goals post Act forty-seven. Scranton at this point, and I really can't believe I'm able to say this, but I can, Scranton at this point is financially stable. Should the elected officials continue to pursue the policies currently in place, I believe that the city is in a strong position to continue moving forward, and I strongly recommend that Scranton's status as a financially distressed municipality be terminated by Secretary Davin. Thank you. That ends my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Rose, for providing testimony. Are there any other interested parties at this time who would like to provide testimony? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Scranton. Mr. Chapman, my name is Larry West. I'm the business administrator for the city of Scranton. I appreciate you affording me, affording me the opportunity to convey some thoughts regarding the city of Scranton and its long tenure under the Act forty-seven program. On January tenth, nineteen ninety-two, the Department of Community Affairs, now the Department of Community and Economic Development, then Secretary Karen A. Miller signed the order granting the petition that the city of Scranton be deemed a distressed municipality under the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Financially Distressed Municipalities Act, Act forty-seven of nineteen eighty-seven. In January of nineteen ninety-two, I was a young emergency medical technician, providing prehospital care on the streets of Scranton. I could not have imagined that nearly thirty years later, I would be sitting here before you, providing sworn testimony regarding the city's impending exit of that distressed municipality's designation. The statute by which, by which the distressed municipalities must adhere to is not foreign to me. Prior to my employment as the city's business administrator, I had the privilege to serve as regional director for former State Senator John P. Blake, who represented the twenty-second district and the city of Scranton in the Pennsylvania Legislature from two thousand and eleven until April of two thousand and twenty-one. Former Senator Blake served as minority chair of the Pennsylvania Senate's Local Government Committee, as well as a member of the Local Government Commission, chairing a subcommittee on taxation. The timing of my employment with the Senate allowed me a front-row seat to what would become Act one ninety-nine of two thousand and fourteen, the Act forty-seven reform legislation, which in part is the reason for this hearing today. In nineteen ninety-two, the year the city was designated distressed, the operating budget was approved at forty-three-point-two million dollars. Ten years later, the two thousand and two operating budget saw a thirty-four percent spending increase to fifty-eight-point-two million. The two thousand and twelve budget saw a twenty-seven-point-five percent jump, lifting the spending plan to eighty-five-point-three million. In its third decade of distressed status, the city's proposed two thousand and twenty-two budget has been submitted at one hundred and sixteen-point-nine million dollars, which is the second year, which is the second year in a row without a tax increase. The city has been, I'm sorry, the city has seen a thirty-seven percent increase in spending over the last ten years, which on average is a thirty-three, thirty-three percent increase in spending every ten years. The Act forty-seven program allowed for a coordinator to assist the municipalities under distressed status. The Commonwealth appointed the Pennsylvania Economy League as Scranton's Act forty-seven coordinator. While under Act forty-seven designation, the city was required to adopt recovery plan that would give the city leaders a blueprint for which they would develop strategies and help financially recover and eventually come out of distressed status. Over the course of thirty years, several administrators and councils, with the consultation from Pennsylvania Economy League and other consultants, adopted recovery plans, but for one reason or another, found it difficult to follow through with implementation. With the adoption of Act one ninety-nine, one ninety-nine of two thousand and fourteen, municipalities were required for the sun, for their sunset in the participation of the Act forty-seven program. Under the provision, the city of Scranton was supposed to exit in two thousand and twenty, but due to COVID pandemic, we requested an extension from, from, we requested an extension from D C E D. After years of fledgling attempts to gain on its financial hardships, the city began gaining ground in two thousand and sixteen, with the sale of the sewer authority and the monetization of the parking system. Difficult decisions are commonplace in government, and particularly in units of local government, but the city eventually committed to its prioritizing its financial health and has been on a cleaner, clearer and more sustainable path. With no solution, with, while no solutions are without trade-offs, the city's pension levels have increased, and we've been able to manage the budget to a surplus in two thousand and twenty, and we project another in two thousand and twenty-one. In my brief time as business administrator, the administration has made additional strides in financial stability. The city is enjoying an S and P rating upgrade to double B-plus stable. It has paid off a twenty-three-million-dollar loan early, and for the second year in a row has reduced its requested amount of tran borrowing. The mayor and the administration have also been working on modernizing some tax policies, continuing to show fiscal restraint and working toward implement, working to implement new policies regarding investments and fund balance, all to ensure stabilizing the fiscal future of the city. Recognizing the continued improvements that we have realized, that have been realized by the city, it is my opinion to support the recommendation of Pennsylvania Economy League to rescind the distressed status designated for the city of Scranton and to exit Act forty-seven of nineteen eighty-seven at this time. Make no mistake, continued vigilance is a necessity, and the fiscal health should remain the priority. I would be remiss if I didn't mention a couple of individuals for their contributions to the city's recovery. First, the Pennsylvania Economy League, Jerry Cross, their staff in particular, Jerry remained dedicated to supporting Scranton for over twenty years. His guidance, steady leadership, and knowledge of local government was essential to the eventual stability that we are enjoying today. And Dave Bolzoni, the former business administrator for the city of Scranton, without doubt saved the city from, saved the city from financial ruin. His financial prowess, understanding of local government financing, and his ability to navigate the city's financial future during extremely difficult times proved his worth not once, but twice, and instanced in the business administrator's office. And lastly, I would like to thank the residents, the landowners, taxpayers, city employees, and business, and the business community for standing by their city. Without their patience, persistence, the city would not be where it is today, recovering. Thank you again for your time.
Mr. West, thank you very much for providing testimony. Is there anyone else at this time?
My name is Joan Hodawanitz, and I'm a resident of the city of Scranton. I retired in nineteen ninety-eight and came back to the city of my birth, so I've been here approximately twenty-two years. And I've been watching the city's efforts to come out of distressed status for all those twenty-two years. I must compliment Mr. Cross on the leadership and guidance he's provided to the city in this effort. His assessments of the financial status of the city and recommendations for the city to take have been essentially right on target. It would be nice if every citizen, especially those who pay property taxes, would sit down and read this twenty-two-page document that Mr. Cross wrote recommending we come out of distressed status, and I'm very happy to see that happen. But that's not going to be realistic, they're not going to read it. So a lot's going to depend on the way this gets reported in the press, and many people are going to feel, I think, a false sense of security that we're coming out of distressed status and all of our problems are behind us. This could happen again if we lose track of what we're doing. Citizens are responsible for the oversight of their elected officials, whether it's through reading the newspaper, listening to the radio, listening to TV news, however they want to do it. You may not know this if you are not a city resident, but Scranton has a long legacy of corruption. One of our prior mayors is currently in prison. And a lot, I think a lot of that history of corruption has created a lack of confidence in the integrity of the city. Fortunately, Mayor Evans and Mayor Cognetti, our current mayor and our future mayor, have done an amazing job to restore that confidence in our government officials. But we need to maintain oversight of the way we spend our tax dollars, from the citizens, the city comptroller's office, our independent auditor, and even the state auditor general. This could happen to us again. How many citizens are going to be told or even realize that there's a potential for major real estate millage increases in their tax bills? Right now, they're trying Right now, they're trying to cope with inflation. Somebody tell them that there could be, over the next five years, a 20.6% increase in their property taxes, and that's not going to go down well. That's why I'm saying that it becomes important, while we should celebrate the fact that we're coming out of distressed status, we should also be realistic in explaining to the citizens of the city and the taxpayers the status of finances as we project them for the next five years. Mr. Cross is right, there's 2-plus percent increase every year in expenditures. The only way to have a balanced budget is to increase revenues by the same amount or to find ways to cut those expenditures. I don't think that's going to happen. I think you're going to need to find tax revenue. Otherwise, you're going to be looking at double-digit property tax increases, and we've been through that before. So while I want to thank Mayor Cognetti and her staff, and the prior staff, especially Mr. Bolzoni, I want to thank Mr. Cross for his leadership and guidance of the city to get us out of this 29-year nightmare. I want people to sit back and think, why did this happen? How did this happen? How do we make sure it doesn't happen again? Because this city cannot afford another financial disaster, but Titanic has got to make it into the port of New York. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony. Are there any other testimonies at this time? I would like to thank those in attendance and those who provided testimony at today's administrative public hearing. The Department of Community and Economic Development will respond to your request for a rescission, and we will proceed with the Act 47 exit process. All findings will be presented to Secretary Dennis Davin for his consideration and official determination of rescission. Thank you once again, and I will now close this Act 47 administrative hearing.